Good evening, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Misak.
Here.
Janutus.
Here.
Bozard.
Here.
Saunders.
Here.
Zalada.
Here.
Spinks.
Here.
Coachy.
Here.
Council, you have the minutes of the work session of November 6, 2017. Any corrections? Seeing none, can I have a motion to accept? By Spinks, second by Zalada. Call the roll, please.
Misak.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Bozard.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Zalada.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Coachy.
Yes.
You have the minutes of the regular meeting of November 6, 2017. Any corrections? Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Bozard, second by Misak. Call the roll.
Misak.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Bozard.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Zalada.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Coachy.
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the budget work session of November 13, 2017. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Spinks, second by Zalada. Call the roll.
Misak.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Bozard.
Yes.
Saunders.
Same.
Zalada.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Coachy.
Yes.
We come to that portion that I, my favorite thing to do, and that's make presentations. Because it's always a good and positive thing, a reflection on our city, and in this case, two of our employees. First one, I'd like to call up Sarah Lloyd. Sometime, you know, we have employees that you don't get a chance to see because they're in an office somewhere, or in the case of the police department, behind locked doors and nobody can get in. It's nice to bring a face up front and do a presentation when they go a little above and beyond. We have a lot of employees that do that. And Sarah, let me read this and then everybody will know what it's about. The city of Bedford, Ohio wishes to express to Sarah Lloyd, congratulations to Sarah Lloyd. Sarah worked tirelessly to get the Bedford Fire Department involved with a revolutionary new policing program aimed at getting people suffering from addiction to help them need. Safe passages is changing the way addicts are handled. Those who request help with their addiction to opiates such as morphine, heroin, oxycodone, and hydrocodone are given help rather than being arrested. Sarah works closely with Berea, Olmsted Township, and Newburgh Heights Police Departments to coordinate these efforts with our partners. This ensures the program is running seamlessly on all ends. The main focus is to ensure that we do everything we can to help people break the cycle of addiction. Sarah is able to do all this without missing a beat, in spite of her immense workload as head of our records division. On behalf of the City Council, the administration, and the citizens of Bedford, we publicly recognize the achievements of Sarah Lloyd on assisting the Bedford Police Department, Berea Police Department, Olmsted Township Police Department, and Newburgh Heights Police Department, and those who request the help with addiction, and extend this expression of our pride in her accomplishments. Congratulations. Like I said, there's another example of one of our employees stepping up and going above and beyond and representing all those other departments. It's a terrific thing. For those that don't know, the safe passage programs are for people that are addicted to the opiates, to heroines and that, they could actually go to the police department, request help, and instead of going to jail, they go get help. We've had a number of people come in and do that already. We know, and I think the chief can tell you, we cannot arrest ourselves out of the heroin problem. It just, we could fill our jails up and it wouldn't solve the problem. The safe passages is one step toward doing that, and it's a good thing, and we appreciate your effort. Chief, would you like to add anything?
I'm just going to say that Sarah has worked really hard. She brought the program to a former chief leader when he was still here before he retired. And they just picked it up and ran with it. And like you said, we partnered with the other three cities, and it's really working out well. And Sarah is very passionate about it, and she put a lot of time in, above and beyond her own schedule, does a lot on her own, and I'm glad she's getting recognized, she deserves it.
Good, good. Thank you. Let me say, I love doing this part. We get into all that spending money and stuff. This is what, this is what it's all about, having, having the right people working for us. And I, this time, I'd like to call up Kathy Chapman. Kathy works in our service department. We know she runs the place. I think she's the service director, but we know who runs it. A good administrative assistant is worth their weight in gold. Kathy, well, let me read this and then I'll, that'll explain everything, why we have you up there. And again, just another employee that has stepped up above and beyond. This to Kathy Chapman. The city of Bedford, Ohio wishes to express congratulations to Kathy Chapman. Kathy was at Roseland Lanes Bowling Alley where John Bersey was not feeling well. Upon returning from throwing his first bowling ball, he then grabbed the counter and slumped to the floor. His teammates rushed to him to help him, and when someone yelled to call 911, Kathy noticed that John was on the floor. Kathy asked for assistance in placing John on a hard and flat surface where she checked for his pulse and breathing. Kathy and one of her friends, both trained in CPR, shared chest compressions until Oakwood Rescue Squad arrived. Upon John's return home from the hospital, his teammates learned his potassium level was extremely high, which caused his heart attack. John received a heart pump and is in need of a heart transplant. Kathy is very grateful that she took CPR first aid training offered by the Bedford Fire Department because she now feels confident enough to perform CPR. Kathy would personally like to thank Stephanie Blaschko and Joe Cisack in the Bedford Police Department for offering these types of classes. On behalf of City Council, the administration, the citizens of Bedford, and John Bersey, we publicly recognize the heroic efforts of Kathy Chapman on saving the life of John Bersey. Again, yeah, again, we have an employee step up. Very difficult thing to do CPR on somebody you really don't know and to jump in and do it. And I commend you for that, and I thank our fire department for offering these classes. You guys could step in a little bit. We all know our fire department is great in offering these classes, and I'm sure any time somebody else wants to have a CPR class, just contact them and they'll let you know when the next classes are. But it's great, and it does take a lot of courage to step up and do that. I know back in my day, when I was getting paid to do those things, and still to actually do that work on somebody and saving their life is, you don't think about it when you're doing it, but after, then you're like, what did I just?
These were gone and that's sad.
So, you're trying to rush out of here. Oh, you can sit down a minute. But again, I want to thank you for doing that and making a positive impact, but certainly on the gentleman's life.
And he was in the hospital for seven weeks. He walked into the bowling alley last Friday for the first time.
Oh, cool. Very good. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
And we have some more presentations. Who wants to go first here? Fire Department, you have one? Meals on Wheels. Who we have here for Meals on Wheels? Oh, Diana, of course. Because she's got the sweatshirt. Meals on Wheels is one of our favorite charities around here, and the Fire Department, I'll let him explain all that, and here, you get over here.
On behalf of.
He's got a check for you.
On behalf of Bedford Fire Fighters Locust 1683, we'd like to present a check to Meals on Wheels.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We've been donating to Meals on Wheels for approximately 10 years now, I believe.
It comes out of our union fund, our government into it, and it's from us to help the community.
And without a clown bake this year.
Yes. So thank you for all that you do for.
Thank you.
That's not all.
Oh, okay.
Our city manager also has a presentation.
Also, thank you very much on behalf of everything you do in your group. I know it's all about volunteers with Meals on Wheels and trying to do good for those that are in need. And what we do at City Hall throughout the year on Fridays, we allow our employees who wish to participate, that they can come in casual jeans and not our normal business attire if they pay a dollar, and that's every Friday. And that dollar goes into a kitty, and then that kitty turns into our donation, and we're going to donate it to Meals on Wheels as we always have. And, I hope I'm active, but I think there's right around $900 on behalf of what's been collected from the staff for Meals on Wheels. So thank you.
I'm just here for the hugs.
Stand up volunteers.
Yeah, where's our volunteer?
We have a few that are here tonight.
Yeah, we have one more.
We have one more.
Thanks to all you volunteers, if they could use more. I'm sorry, Mike.
Yeah, you're all part of the community.
Yes. So Mike Falk from the Bedford Rotary Club.
We, at our annual Riff Fest last year, we were taking tip money, and we were putting it as Meals on Wheels. So you have another check coming from the Bedford Rotary Club for $750.
Well, Rotary, people here tonight, if you all stand up for a quick second. Mr. Lee Bowden. Finally, Lord Himmler. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, good stuff.
I have to say that we've been, I've been involved with this now for nine years. Some of our volunteers have been around for 30 years. They're almost all retired because who else is available between 11 and 12:30 in the middle of the day, Monday through Friday? But we are so proud to say we have 86 volunteers that give us one day a week, one hour a week. And we serve over 90 people each day, okay, in Bedford, in Bedford Heights, Oakwood, and Walton Hills. Most of their meals come from the federal government and are free. They also, some of them pay for their meals. These checks also help. Some of our low, low income, I'm talking people that are earning less than $1,200 a month and try to live on that. It also helps subsidize. When we can't get a federal, enough federal money because it keeps, it keeps, it's, what do they call it when you start eating a heart attack? What vasculitis? Well, that's what it's doing, is less and less to take care of more and more people. And by having a group like this, Southeast Clergy, Meals on Wheels, as opposed to the national one, we're independent. We're volunteers, and we've been around for 41 years. And so every time we get a check like this, I don't have to say, no, we can't help you. So I want to thank you all for being so supportive. It's such a fine thing for our city fathers and mothers to care about what's happening, particularly to seniors in this shape. So thank you so much for the whole year. Is that all right?
This is good.
Yeah, this is all.
They just do great work for our community, helping the people that need it the most. And what's nice, 100% of that money goes right, stays right here in town. All right, so now we got to do business. Hope anybody needs to leave now. See, the Fire Department guys just got called out in the calls.
Thank you all.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
I'm glad to see the bulk of everybody staying. All right. Old business, ordinance number 9538-17. An ordinance to make appropriations for, well, actually, we need a motion to amend this. We're going to put it on, yeah, an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and expenditures of the city of Bedford for year 2018 as amended and declaring an emergency. Need a motion to amend it, then a motion for a third and final.
The amendment that we have here is that we have three sources that'll help us pay for the economic development directors' salary for 2018. What we're doing is adding that to the budget. We had to go through that this past couple of weeks as to what that budget would look like, and we have the Southeast Consortium, our first interview.
First suburbs consortium.
First suburbs consortium, I'm sorry. And then there's the council also that will be helping pay for salary. So once we had that established, we amended the budget to reflect that.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for that amendment? By Saunders, second by Misak. Call the roll.
Misak.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Bozard.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Zalada.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Coachy.
Yes.
Motion for suspension by Zalada, second by Janutus. Call the roll, please.
Misak.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Bozard.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Zalada.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Coachy.
Yes.
And motion for third and final by Misak, second by Bozard. Frank, this is our.
This is our annual budget for the year 2018. After many meetings with the directors and council, council has put together the budget for 2018, and I do recommend passage. Total of funds will be $42,338,775, encompassing the general fund, which will come up with a total of $17,450,905.
Call the roll.
Misak.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Bozard.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Zalada.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Coachy.
Yes.
I will be able to legally pay all our bills next year. Ordinance number 9539-17.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to apply for two grants, except one, the first one being the Community Development Supplemental Grant, and the second being a Community Development Block Grant in the total amount of $200,000 and declaring an emergency. Could we get a motion to amend that as well to include the $150,000 grant that we're pursuing as well as the $50,000 grant?
Yes. Amendment by Bozard, second by Saunders. Call the roll.
Misak.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Bozard.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Zalada.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Coachy.
Yes.
And motion for third and final, by Bozard, second by Misak. Mike, that's yours.
Thank you, Mary. As mentioned, these are two grants being offered through Hyatt County. The first one is due at the end of November, which is the supplemental grant, and that grant is worth $50,000. The CDBG grant, valued at $150, has not been released yet. Typically, it's released at the end of the year, although the county is holding that back until they know specifically what type of federal dollars will be coming in. The recommendation is to simply be ready. They're going to turn that over, if the funds do become available, they'll turn it over very, very quickly, which means we have to be prepared to have a grant in the works, which is why we're asking for authorization to allow us to apply now. So should that grant be released, we can put together an application and be ready to submit it very, very quickly. Because what will happen is the cycle, once a grant is awarded, you have to spend it in that calendar year. And not knowing where they're at and when those funds will be released, you know, it's going to tighten the window as far as how quickly we need to be able to get a project out there and actually have that project completed because it's on a reimbursable basis. We did have a public meeting last week and discuss some various projects, also got some good input from those who attended, and I want to thank everyone that attended. It was probably the most well-attended meeting that we've had regarding grants and funding opportunities. And there were some good ideas that came out of that for us to do some homework and look for additional grants, some residential, and how we can assist residents with potential home, home issues, and all those things being on the radar. But these two, this is simply to authorize us to submit application.
Questions? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Misak.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Bozard.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Zalada.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Coachy.
Yes.
Our reports, Mr. Malice.
Real quickly, just want to go over a couple of items. Obviously, I want to congratulate our employees, Sarah and Kathy. Mary, you mentioned that we have terrific people back here, and I think those are, those are some examples. So, well done, well done, Kathy and Sarah. And also, not only thanking Meals on Wheels, but thanking everybody that was involved in this room, in our Fire Department, Rotary, and all of our employees who contribute. It goes a long way, and if there's a time that it's needed, it's the holidays. I want to give a friendly reminder of the tree lighting ceremony this week, or this Wednesday, 6 o'clock prompt. We may have a guest that will possibly be filming live for the news that evening. So again, be prompt, it's a quick, quick event. Hopefully, we can get some positive PR out of it as well. In regards to the storm this weekend, you know, I was in town and spoke with council and going around town as far as dealing with some of the streets being flooded. We did have a crew on site that were dealing with some bound trees. What we did notice that the majority, there were three streets specifically that were holding water, and they were caused by the catch basins being completely covered with the leaves. But once we were able to get there, get on site, get those cleared, the water subsided very, very quickly. So that was the primary reason for that. We didn't have a lot of sewer calls, which was good, but you know, our crews are on standby in storms of that nature. If there are substantial issues that come through on dispatch, we're aware of it and we'll try to get a crew out if it's needed. It all depends on the amount of calls that do come in. The service guys do a great job. But even before they're here, you know, so the public knows, in dealing with a storm like that, our police department, you know, when available, obviously, if they're on a call, they're tied up. But for instance, Saturday, they were going around the entire city and identifying areas. There were some streets that, yeah, there was water, but it was subsiding quickly. They're the ones that stay in touch with dispatch and ultimately with service as well. So even when those couple streets did subside after our service guys got there and cleared the leaves, they did do another patrol throughout the city. And in those cases, if there was an issue, they'd be available, service and police, we would do what's necessary as far as blocking the roadways and whatnot. So they were, they were on top of it, which is always good to know. Obviously, I want to wish everybody a safe and happy holiday. I know, Mary, you're going to have something to mention regarding real estate transaction coming up, but I did want to mention that members of council and the administration, we had some guests that were invited from Senator's Office, from Congresswoman's Office, from the state of Ohio, and actually, county executive was present last week at Zelia. And it was a great event. They did kind of a quick tour, but also talked about where they've come over the last couple years that they've, since they've acquired the property, and where they're going. And the big, biggest hurdle, as I think we mentioned earlier this year, they've worked with the FDA to get a modified consent decree. And what that does is it's laid the groundwork to allow them to produce those lifesaving drugs again in 2018. That will happen. They have, as previously mentioned, relocated all of their packaging and shipping operations from Chicago, Illinois, to Bedford. That's taking place now. So what that means is everything produced worldwide, China, India, Raleigh, North Carolina, all those different locations, they come here first and then they get dispersed here. I think that shows a huge commitment for the company, and more importantly, over the next probably 45 to 60 days, they're going to be hiring another minimum of 75 people. That'll get them to position themselves to begin that production again in 18. Will it stop there? Hopefully not. We want to make sure we do everything we can to be that partner with them, and I think they're going to do, do great things. And as Frank's mentioned, the next three to five years will be critical for them, and again, they're making huge, huge strides, and that's great. Knowing what we were up against four years ago, to see what they've accomplished now is a breath of fresh air, so good news. Lastly, I just want to take a minute, Greg, I know it's your last meeting, I just want to thank you for all of your contributions to the city over the, I'm not sure how long, 20, 27 years. And obviously, you've always been a supporter of every administration. I just spoke to Bob about this, and he wanted me to express his thanks as well, supported the administration and city manager's office throughout that time, so thank you, I appreciate it. End of report.
And I'm going to jump in here ahead of my time to, because you mentioned about the Yeah, that's going to have, Walmart has been sold. That's a good thing. It's by a developer bought it, and so he, they just signed the papers, as a matter of fact. Mike had to leave our meeting in the middle of it, at the work session, to go out and sign. Gave the guy one last piece of paper he needed for tomorrow morning, so that's good news. The developer is a big time developer. He's the one that brought Amazon to North Randall.
Really?
So we think, just mentioned that Channel 8 will be doing the New Day Cleveland on December 8th at 10 o'clock in the morning, The Lost Man does that show. The Lost Man does that show. They're going to be filming live from the square, from the commons. And what's really good is the next day is Christmas in Bedford Falls, so that day should really have a, Dafton should be jumping once that gets on the air about what's going on there. So, I don't have details yet exactly how they're going to film and stuff, but it's a great program they put on. I watched a couple of them when I have been home there to have time to look at, and it's a good thing. And mentioning Zelia, again, they had an open house for council and some of our higher-ups of the government, our state senator, state rep, and our county commissioner, county executive. And they could not impress upon us enough that they're here to stay. The good thing about Zelia is they're owned by a foundation, not a board of directors and a bunch of stockholders. So, they're not worried about getting dividends every quarter. They're there to do good for the people, and their big thing is pharmaceuticals dealing with infectious diseases. And in this day and age, that's a huge thing. Their big thing they make now is Vincamycin. If you've ever had an infection while you're in the hospital, chances are it was treated by that drug made by Zelia, which will soon be produced here. So, and they do some other drugs, too. Great, great company to work with. They've been very upfront. We got to go into an area that, once we left it on Tuesday, it was sealed off, became a clean room, which means you have to spend about six months in training before you can even go in the room to work there. It's that clean. Takes a whole lot to put on the suit that the people have to wear while they're working in that environment. And they have to take class after class on how to deal with all that. The air has to be perfect, and every vial has to be cleaned perfectly, which we're all grateful for. When they're giving you that chop, you don't want to bother to pick up the dusty shelf somewhere. So, and the equipment, it's fantastic, just these dryers that they're putting in. They have six of them, and you get like eight hundred thousand vials. It's a two-day supply. It's huge, huge. We're very happy that they're here and going to be hiring people. And again, have a great Thanksgiving. It's a good day for family because you don't have to worry about buying gifts for everybody or anything. Just know together, eat, drink, and be merry, and hopefully, everybody has a pleasant Thanksgiving with their friends and family. And we'll go back to where we should be.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Montel, I'll be short as usual. I just, there's a lot more to come, too, so stay tuned. Wanted to congratulate Meals on Wheels and all, and thank everybody for their participation in that program. Rotary, thank you. Police Fire, I had the pleasure of working with Kathy Chapman and Sarah Lloyd, and I can tell you, they really do know their jobs and are very good at it, very... Particularly worked with Sarah, and she does a great job in the records room for me, honest to God. She's my administrative assistant there. She's very organized, does a great job. Congratulate all the candidates on their reelections or elections, and not just in Bedford, but throughout the county. And other than that, I just want to echo the sentiments of Mr. Malice towards Mr. Posar. Thank you for all your service, and we'll miss you. Good luck to you, and hopefully, we'll see you. Take care.
Mr. Ambosy?
I'd like to congratulate Sarah on her safe passage. You know, there's a lot of programs that came out of Bedford over the years that went nationwide, and I did a great job, and I think this is another one, example of what could take off from here, and she's doing a great job, and I commend her for that. That's great. Kathy, you're always saving everybody lately, you know? Saving our buddies in the city, saving people out there, and great appreciation to you and what you've learned from the fire department. Meals on Wheels, it's been a pleasure to dress down every Friday to help fund your program. I know my employees appreciate it, and we're very pleased to assist you in any way we can, and thanks again. I'm sending out a reminder for the tax department, I'm not a bad news, for the tax department in regards to estimates for next year, to remind everybody, you know, the new rates are coming, and check your estimates, make sure they're up to date, make sure you're paying enough, and increase that, and I would like the increased tax rate and credit if it affects you. Greg, it's been a pleasure working with you twenty-some years, and, you know, it's just been a long road, and I wish you well and all your endeavors, and appreciate the support over the years, and we've accomplished a lot in that time period, and I appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. And council, I would ask you to hold any comments about Greg until after our resolution. Make sure we pass it before we let him. And I'm going to take license to switch the last two items on the agenda, so. Let's move on. Ordnance number ninety-five, oh, I'm sorry, council. This is Mizek.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see a beautiful crowd coming in tonight to support our council and our city. I want to say, first off, all of us have to be blessed for a good Thanksgiving this year. I know our family will be, and it's not a baby. Okay, too. And I was going to say, Saturday after Christmas is Small Business Saturday. So, if I'm telling you about small businesses, which we do have, we would appreciate if you'd come out and visit our merchants and say hello to them, or we'll say hello to you, and give them a little bit of business so they can at least be on the news that they said that they announced to our sleep, which is Small Business Saturday. Secondly, congratulations to Kathy and Sarah and Dinah. Dinah, you did a beautiful job over all these years. I remember when I used to go to the nursery school that Mrs. Enquist and Mrs. Cooper ran, they started Meals on Wheels back in the late seventies. And from then on, it just grew and grew and grew. And we have more people that have given that time, and we're well-appreciated. And I want to say to you that the people that have been serviced in our area, we know who the volunteer is, and they daily wave to us if we're outside, and we all acknowledge that the food gets to the neighbor on time and every day, and it's the greatest thing I can say. It's a great thing you're doing, keep up the good work. Another thing I wanted to mention was, if I could read my writing, would you write? Our city was fortunate enough to receive turkeys from an anonymous donor, and therefore, council was allowed to take a few turkeys and bring them to a needy family, which we did. The two families that I took care of, they were very appreciative, they're going to enjoy Thursday very much. And the last one went with another one of my residents. His family has fifteen people, and they really wanted this, so thank you, thank you. And lastly, I wanted to say, thanks to the fire departments, because I had to use their services again. Our fire department, our paramedics, and the firefighters have handled ambulance calls in a very good and professional way. And Friday night, on Saturday night, fortunately, our squad was out, so we had to have Maple Heights come in. And it's a little bit nervous, but that's okay. They came in, they did what they did, but you could see the comparison of the two different cities for becoming professional caregiver to the person that needed you. But I want to also say thanks because since we didn't have a squad that night, they did send out that fire truck in, believe me. The neighbors, you don't see all your lawn, we were out Saturday night. And I did want to say thank you to my neighbors for being so supportive of our family over the last six weeks with offers of good wishes, and food if we wanted it, which we didn't, we were fine, and support of myself, so we can leave it to our places. Thank you. Have a good evening, and have a nice Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Mr. Janudis?
Thank you. Well, happy Thanksgiving. Turns out, we've got a lot to be thankful for, as usual, just have to be aware, of course. I want to commend the police department's safe passage program. I know I have before, but I'm very impressed by the direction the police department has decided to go and to find out. I owe thanks to Sarah Lloyd as well. I didn't really know about her, or how she was involved in it. Of course, Dinah and Meals on Wheels is a big deal in Bedford, and in large part because of you and the Winkie deal, so. Always find Dinah very pleasant to beat around, so she's great. And of course, Kathy Chapman, oh my God. Way back, and... And I just, I have to thank her especially, not just for saving someone's life, but she's, of late, she's been extremely responsive to inquiries from the public about service and whatnot, and it's just really, really, really great, and so I want to thank Kathy as well. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders?
Yes, I just want to congratulate all our award recipients tonight, and over to Meals on Wheels. I know we always have a competition. We don't hand you a check at a fancy presentation like this at Strawberry Festival, but we always compete as to who's going to make more money, the tip jar or the booth that's set up on the square. It's always good, it's going to a very worthy cause. I know my parents used it for a number of years, until my father decided that nobody can come in the house anymore. But outside of that, it is a very good organization that needs to continue, and every donation that they get goes to a very, very worthy cause. I want to also say that tonight we passed the budget. You noticed that there's only a seventeen million dollar general fund, our budget, but the overall budget's forty-two million. A lot of people don't realize a little community like this has a forty-two million dollar budget, and it's because we have our own utilities. And because of those utilities, we can respond greater and faster than a lot of your other surrounding communities. Now, yes, we have our problems, there's no question about that, and we are noble communities, but we are working on it. It's good to see a budget this year that actually shows progress moving forward after the last quite a few, several years now, where it was going the other direction. We can actually start, hopefully, getting back to the way we used to, so. And then I'd also like to thank all the volunteers from last night, Bedford Salvation Army fundraiser that's used to prepare meals, baskets, and so forth through the holidays. Just as a reminder, the Kettles will be going out here within the week. The ones at Giant Eagle and the ones at Sam's Club, go to the Bedford Salvation Army, they do not go downtown. They stay local for our local communities, which is basically the Bedford Township area. So, contribute to those, they need the money. Once again, it goes to those that are less fortunate than us, and it does a very good service in that light. And while we're at it, the Lions Club has their annual raffle, which if anybody hasn't bought their ticket yet, it goes to the Robert Schroeder Memorial Scholarship Raffle is what it's called. You want to buy one of those tickets, if they still have any left, which I'm sure they do, the donation is twenty-five dollars, but it is for the entire year. So, there's numerous raffles every month. You can probably win your money back if you buy enough tickets. But it goes, once again, to a very worthy cause. The Lions have been big in town for ninety years now, so let's keep them moving forward also. So, I want to see everybody here on Wednesday, that's our square lighting coming up here. Let's hope we can get on TV, because hopefully, it will be covered, so, which is one of those things that we seem to have one of the better displays in the state, as far as I'm concerned, and we don't get all that much publicity for it, so let's hope it does pick up in that intensity, and with Christmas in Bedford Falls coming in here with Channel Eight also. So, we'll wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And one quick note for Mike, more and more people are putting their trashcans on on Sunday nights. We need to start cracking down on that again. Rugby shoes isn't picked up until Tuesday or Wednesday, and when they're put out on Sundays, it's one of those things, especially when you have a windy weekend, they get knocked over. So, appreciate it if we could pick up a little bit on that. Thank you, everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. This is Salata.
Thank you. Not to be repetitive, but congratulations to our employees. Sarah has already left, but Kathy, I go along with Molly. I have bugged you for a long time, and I hope my predecessor bugs you just as much. That's big. And that's my next point. Congrats to the new council members, that'll be Fluardi in Ward Three and Heather Rose in Ward Five. And congrats to all those who tried. Try again. We always have room for good people as evidence tonight. The obvious, happy Thanksgiving to all of you, and as Mike, as everyone has said, hope to see you all at the tree lighting. It's a major event in the city. It will be covered by the media, and we deserve it. Like Don just said, it's one of the better displays for anywhere around. And years ago, we were on the cover of National Cities, I think is the name of the magazine, or Cities and Villages, one of those, and we were on the cover, and it is gorgeous at night. I mean, it is something to behold, and I don't think any of our more affluent communities have anything to compare, being a little biased, of course. Oh, and Dinah, or Meals on Wheels, you deserve everything we give also. She does a magnificent job. She and I, and her husband, I think are, I would consider, good friends, and I'll be seeing more of you in the future. Don even made me a birdhouse. Thanking Mayor for the good news tonight. I'm sure everybody was happy to hear that, and there's a lot going on. The Salvation Army dinner, as Don alluded to, was very, very good. Every year, I try to make that, and it's very worth whatever, you know, whatever is spent, the meal tickets are very reasonable, but I think you get a lot for that, and I see a lot of people here that was there last night, and happy next year, there's hopefully more. And our ex-council member, Warner Dutton, was one of the ones who keeps that going, so congratulations for that. I think that's about it. Oh, I don't know, yeah, I congratulated them. Oh, our men in blue, all our men in blue. There were a lot of police and fire here tonight, and many accolades go to them, and what they do is, as we all know, magnificent, and they keep our city going. And you know, I'm sitting here tonight, listening to all this wonderful stuff that our city does every day, on a daily basis, not just around the holiday. I'm going to miss it. I'm going to try to keep in touch, but I feel badly because I think we have a great city. Let's keep going. Thank you again, happy Thanksgiving, happy tree lighting, and I'll be talking to you soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Spinks?
Congrats to Sarah Lloyd, and thank her very much for doing that, and Kathy, it was very honorable what you did, that was, that's a great feeling to say someone's life. You think when you're doing the CPR thing, so, oh, I'll probably never use this, and boy, it, you jump into action and you don't even think about it. boy, it, you jump into action and you don't even think about it. And Dinah, you know how I feel about Meals on Wheels. Best hour of my life every week, it's a, it just is a joy to, I've met so many nice people by doing it. I was talking to Vic Fluharty, and he's retired now, so I told him, an hour out of his day, so he's kind of promised me, not a strong argument after the first of the year, and I have a couple more volunteers after the first of the year too, so, I'm out there working. Back in all this stuff. Static about the Walmart being sold, that's in my mind, a lot of really good stuff coming up for two thousand and eighteen. Two thousand and seventeen was kind of a rough year, losing my mom in March, Stan losing his dad, lost a lot of friends, just lost another good friend, and two thousand and seventeen was kind of tough, and looking forward to two thousand and eighteen, and I hope everybody has a very blessed Thanksgiving. I know I'm going to my grandbabies are coming in, so I'll be getting in a candy mode, so that's it, and I'm off.
Thank you. Mr. Posar.
No reports and comments, send all the folks, so later, thank you. One thing I want to say, you know, it's starting to run late, for us, one hour meeting is running late, but we're gonna go a little longer. I was fortunate enough to go to the National League of Cities Conference this past week, just got home yesterday. Very good conference, it was down in Charlotte, North Carolina, where it was sixty-some degrees every day, but I only got to look out the window and see the weather, because just busy down there. And for Greg, I'm giving a report. Picked up, picked up a lot of, I drove, picked up a lot of information and got a lot of ideas floated around, I was gonna take me a while to sort through all of them, because you just pick up so much stuff here, it's, it's amazing, all the information we can get from attending these. My only regret is going by myself. At times they had two or three, they'd have up to five or six classes, but two or three of them I really wanted to attend, and I was there by myself, so I couldn't cover the other ones. Back when we had more people going, we'd split up, so everybody gets to go to different ones, but, you know, I started off on Thursday morning with, oh wait, maybe go back before you. Just to give you an idea of what we go through, Wednesday night they had a nice little welcome reception at the vendor, vendor show, and we have so many people come down there to try to impress us with all the stuff they have to offer the cities, and I talked to quite a few of them, because I picked up some ideas of new products and innovations that are out there, and I'll pass them along, belong to the appropriate people. But I started out on Thursday morning at eight o'clock with the Operation Prevention, Educating Youth on the Dangers of Opiate Misuse, and got a nice book here to help us get some programming, and I will be talking to the superintendent of schools on getting some programs, start with the kids. They started out talking to kids about these opioids in high school, then after teachers got in the program, they said, that's too late, they're starting with the kids at eight years old. So, educating, I'll tell you how this stuff is, it's such a huge problem, I mean, across the whole country. And I was sorry to say that Ohio leads the number one offender in opioid abuse, and was a real problem, as be pointed out when we're having our meeting. But anyhow, I started out on that meeting, and then I went to, at nine o'clock, Using Transparency to Rebut Public Misinformation and Misunderstandings. Nine o'clock, I was excited, the hall opened. Ten o'clock, The Art of Economic Collaboration for Small Business and Entrepreneurs. Eleven o'clock, Communities for All Ages, Inspiring Ideas for America's City Leaders and Are Concerned About Our Seniors and the Kids and Everybody in Between. Twelve o'clock, finally it was lunch. One thirty-three was our general session. Matt Zone from Cleveland, Councilman, was our president this year, and this was last meeting, we elected a new president. We had a great talk by several people, but one of them was retired American astronaut and U.S. Navy Captain Mark Kelly, husband of Gabby Giffords that was shot in Arizona. What a talk, what a talk. That was worth the price of admission, and he talked about his exploits going into space, and then talked about the shooting with his wife and how it affected their family. It was amazing, and then he brought out his wife to say a few words, and she only said about two sentences, but she walked out there on her own, it's very difficult. It was a great moment, but he talked about, you know, the teamwork going and as an astronaut and all that, and all the work and help and support that he got to help Gabby get to where she's at, and she told everybody there, just make sure you work for the right reasons, and get back home and do good for your cities. It was very powerful. Then we went from there to creating a destination brand that maximized the visitor economy and fuel economic development. That was Thursday. Friday, we started out at nine o'clock with the general session. Then at ten-thirty, we started our workshops again, Making Data Work for Your City, Identifying Cost Savings and Improving Services. That went till twelve o'clock, then lunch, it was a good day. Then at one thirty-three was our First Tier Suburbs, I was the immediate past president of that organization. Always a good group to work with, they bring together all the people that are, the cities that are around the poor cities, that we have similar problems, get to talk about those. And there's dozens of people across the country, if we have an issue, I just pick up the phone and say, how, how did you guys do that? Really great for networking. Three-thirty was Supporting Maker Entrepreneurs in Small-Scale Manufacturing. That went till five o'clock, and then in the evening, we had a tailgate party inside, so it was nice there. We do, we do some fun things too. Then on Saturday morning, we start out at nine o'clock, I went to Big Ideas for Small Cities, to hear from four cities on things they did back home to help energize their communities, so I got some great notes from them. That's one, two years, three years ago, I was invited to do the first, the first time they did the Big Ideas for Small Cities, I got to speak at that. Kind of neat to have six hundred people sitting there, listen to your idea, you had for your community. Then we went on to boosting the economic development through city branding, then lunch, and we had a speaker during lunch, and it was Magic Johnson, the basketball player. He did a great talk, and then he even brought kids up and talked to them directly on staying in school and doing your best. Again, very, very good talk by him. Our new president, Mark Stoller from Little Rock, Arkansas, was introduced as our new president, and he was surprised by a video from former President Clinton, who has, Mark worked on his first campaign to run for a state representative in Arkansas. So, some of these people there, been around and know some people. That was kind of cool to see the president just talking to Mark and encouraging him to lead the League of Cities. And then Saturday night, we had a host event by the Commodores. That was awesome, there was some great entertainers. I'm gonna bore you a little bit more, but my, my personal expenses or expenses to the city, the hotel being the biggest expense, anytime you go to a big city, that's usually like eleven hundred dollars. But I spent, on my budget, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars for food for five days. And I spent one hundred and seventeen dollars in gas. I did spend a game on my city credit card, to get down there. Again, I spent less than fifteen hundred dollars to get invaluable information. All kinds of big snapshots of small cities' success, they tell about some cities and what they did. Preemption, that's where the state government is taking away all our home rule, they're preempting all kinds of stuff, every state, not just ours. When we talk about our local government funds and they're taking it away, every state's got those problems, and they talked about those. I have more notes. Operation Prevention goes back to the opioid crisis, which I would have talked to the superintendent to see about getting in our schools. Tons and tons of things, a bunch of notes I took, and I probably bored you enough. But it was well worth it, and I encourage all our members to go there and learn what you can, it's really, really good advice.
Thank you for sharing.
Yeah, I guess my head's still spinning with stuff to do with. Anyhow, let's get on with business. Ordinance number ninety-five forty-seven.
An ordinance declaring the property and structure located at eighty-six Willard Avenue, covering parcel number eight-one-one-two-nine-zero-two-nine, a nuisance, and therefore condemning the property, ordering action and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Posar, second by Saunders. Call the roll, please.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Zalada.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a property that's been vacant for some time, we're trying to work with potentially the lien holders to get this addressed. Obviously, they're significantly back in their taxes, as well as behind in their water. But again, our issue is, this will allow us to really try to push the lien holders to try to get this property specifically, the exterior, addressed.
And this helps, it gives the building department another hammer, and say, look, you don't fix it, we're taking it down. And two weeks ago, we had done the property on Gray Street, and that guy stepped forward and said, oh no, I really, I want to fix it, and hasn't done it yet, but...
He's in court.
He just, he was in court. But it gets their attention, they think we're serious, just fix it. And we're looking for compliance, we don't get a big kick out of tearing somebody's house down. Some of them need to be torn down that are just so bad shape, you wonder how people need to live in them. But the big thing we want is a productive house in the neighborhood, because a rundown house just kills all houses right next to it, and the whole neighborhood. We can't have that. These things give that hammer to the building commissioner, who goes, hey, look, you don't get going on this, we're taking it down, so, and we don't take this lightly. This stuff goes on for months, in some cases even years. So, it's a big step when we get to this point, take them, go into it lightly.
Call the roll.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Mizek, second by Saunders. Again, Mike.
Similar situation, this property is occupied, we've really been trying over the last few years to work with the property owner. Last year, they were, in 2016, they were given their third and final notice, they had indicated they were utilizing a program to address the roof and exterior items, that actually in turn did not prove to be true. We need to get the exterior, specifically the roof, addressed. Most likely, we're gonna get, utilize this and get them in front of the court.
You call the roll, please.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Zalada, second by Spinks. And Mike.
As ordinance reads, this is our contract, our yearly contract with GPD, who does provide all of our engineering services. All of their rates are frozen for the upcoming year, which means it'll be the same rate as it was the previous year. We've utilized them on a wide range of projects throughout the year, specifically projects at our wastewater plant. We are working with them to have an inspector on site for all the Dominion projects. I will say though, Dominion is reimbursing us for that inspector, so it's, although we are utilizing our services, we do get reimbursed by those individuals that are on site. Currently, we're working on some zoning items. Joe and his team assist us as far as what needs to take place, recommendations, zoning studies, review of those studies. Wealth of knowledge from those individuals, they've been working in the city for a long, long time. So, when there's questions in certain areas or issues in certain areas, they have a pretty good idea of where it's coming from, best approach to address it. And obviously, our staff works very, very closely with them, and has a great relationship. Clint has worked with GPD for a very long time, and others, so, we have a great working relationship and recommend the extension of this contract.
Call the roll, please.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
We're gonna skip to eve, motion to accept the recommendation of November eighth, 2017, Planning Commission.
Yes, the Planning Commission approved the application that we're discussing, and therefore, if we, if you decide to accept it, you must approve this motion. So, can I get a motion to accept the recommendation of the November eighth, 2017, Planning Commission, filed by Coldwood LLC, located in Pepperdello, Ohio, who owns the apartment complex located at ninety-three Solon Road in Bedford, also known as Wolf's Cove Apartments, which was seeking to reconstruct a twenty-four bay parking garage to replace the structure that was damaged or demolished. I vote affirmative as to agree with the Planning Commission.
Yeah, so this is a good thing, improve the property there, which is always a good idea. Question?
Call the roll.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion for that? By Janutis, second by Spinks.
Call the roll.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
This is why we like...
We're going to skip to eve. Motion to accept the recommendation of November eighth, 2017, Planning Commission, filed by Coalwood LLC, located in Pepperdello, Ohio, who owns the apartment complex located at ninety-three Solon Road in Bedford, also known as Wolf's Cove Apartments, which was seeking to reconstruct a twenty-four bay parking garage to replace the structure that was damaged or demolished. I vote affirmative as to agree with the Planning Commission. Yeah, so this is a good thing to improve the property there, which is always a good idea. Question? Call roll. Oh, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion for that by Janutis, second by Spinks? Call roll. We have a resolution number twenty-five eighteen dash seventeen. I'll read this one case. Being a resolution commending Greg Posar for serving the city of Bedford as councilman representing Ward Five. Whereas Greg Posar has served Ward Five and the community as a whole as councilman with dedication and distinction since January first, nineteen ninety-two. And whereas with many years of service, he has been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of the community, as he has worked constantly for the betterment of its economic, cultural, and aesthetic development. And he has earned the admiration and high regard of those with whom he has come into contact and the affection of his fellow public servants. And whereas the council of the city of Bedford wishes to publicly express its sincere appreciation and thanks to Greg Posar for his contributions to the community and highly commend him for the manner in which he has carried out his responsibilities and duties as a member of city council. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Bedford, county of Catahoula, and state of Ohio, that the council of City Bedford hereby publicly thanks Greg Posar and extend our deep appreciation for his service to the community. That the clerk of council is hereby authorized and dedicated to forward a certified copy of this resolution to Greg Posar immediately upon its passage and adoption. Wherefore, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and immediately after its passage. Need a motion to accept this resolution by Janutis, second by Salada. Call roll.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Posar?
Same.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
And before I turn it over to you, Greg, I just want to say, I've worked with you for the last seventeen years or so. And that one thing with Greg Posar, he always comes prepared. Probably nobody more prepared when he shows up at the meeting. He knows everything inside and out, and his information there will be invaluable to us. And we haven't always seen eye to eye, and I take that as a good thing. As I've said before, if we all just sat here and agreed, even though many times we've voted yes, 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 in the caucus room, there's a lot of no, no, no. And it's through that insight that we have arguments, disagreements, but in the end, we come together and try to put out the best product for the city that we can. Like I said, Greg's always prepared. And ninety-nine percent of the time, been a pleasure working with you. And that's a good thing. And that's a good thing. Again, I want to congratulate you on your service and extend to you and Vollette a good retirement from the city. I know you're still going to be working, but I'm assuming you're still going to be working. And I wish you all the best with that. Appreciate that. Before you say it, it says here, we must give you a certified copy, which we have here upon its passage. It says the clerk of council will give it to you. You got to give it to me. We're going to follow the rules. Appreciate it. Good luck.
Mayor, may I ask you something?
Yes, let's, please.
I'll be quick. I want to personally thank Greg. Interestingly, even though we're apparently from different political sides, I've discovered something about it all, when it turned out that we were mostly in agreement about everything, whether it be Bedford or the world at large. As much as I like his replacement, personally, I'm going to miss Greg greatly, especially his experience and the counsel that he's given me. But more importantly, and especially his friendship, which is not going to go away. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you. Yes, Colonel.
I too would like to congratulate Greg on his retirement from Bedford Council. He and I shared a special camaraderie since we were both elected at the same time. So he and I were, at that time, the new guys. And I have had... It's been interesting working with Greg. As the mayor has stated, he always came prepared. He was an invaluable person on council, especially in the finance area. I think he gave us, he went over that budget with a fine-tooth comb. Went over every issue involving money with a fine-tooth comb. And I think that will be missed. I mean, I'm sure that other people can do the same thing at one time or another, but I think that he was very good at that. And I never had too many differences with him. I may not have always agreed, but in the end, he always did what was right for the city. And I think we can all appreciate that. So good luck, Greg, especially now that you have a new grandchild. So good luck to you. I'll miss sitting next to you. Thank you.
All.
I would like to wish you well and mom, mom, gently with your family and everything. And maybe I won't get kicked anymore. I don't know. That definitely doesn't come from me because once in a while, I got a...
It's not footsie's fault.
I know. However, when I first started, when I first started, I wasn't as good as you are as far as addressing people. And between you and Greg Yakich, I was, I considered myself never politically correct to you, yours, and his standards. Well, I think I kind of am growing into a little bit bitter of political correctness. You have taught me a lot. I respect you for taking care of our area of four or five. And I remember when we went through and I introduced you to a whole bunch of people over there, and everybody kind of just stayed with you, and we all believe in you, and we still do. And I want to wish you very well. And I know you'll have a good time in whatever you do. And like Marilyn says, take care of that little grandbaby.
I might as well say a few words here.
Don't kill yourself.
No, no. No, it's going to seem strange because for twenty years I've been on council, Greg's always sat next to me. So, you know, we have our little side conversations at times, which I know Lori hates because it gets picked up on the microphone. I wish you very much success in your endeavors in the future. I will miss definitely your scrutiny of the budget. That's one of the nice things about Greg. He, as Marilyn alluded to, he usually picked off little things that some of us may have missed. And since Greg Yakich's name was brought up, he wishes you the best in the future, too. He's on the zoning commission at Northfield Center Township where I work, and I just ran into him at a meeting the other day. So he wanted me to express that to you, too. And good luck. I hope you just don't vanish and that you'll stay in touch.
Thank you, Doc. Appreciate that. I reserve my comments. Give that to the floor.
Well, good evening, everyone. This is certainly a special milestone in our lives, kind of recognized. And I've already got an airplane tomorrow morning to go to Asia, and right now, my ticket's all screwed up, and my mind's in the back with customer service. As the mayor stated, I have four pages of comments here that, yes, I'm prepared to deliver, but I'm not going to. I'm going to defer to the citizenry who I know have been waiting there a long time and want to come up here and express a special issue and put it in front of council. But in my last comments, I'd like to say that it feels like, you know, when someone owns a boat, the first day they own that boat, they're very, very happy, excited, and they float it for a couple of years. And that's the happiest day in the boat owner's life. The second happiest day in the boat owner's life is the last day when they sell it. It kind of combines with my feeling that I had when I got out of the Navy and came back here with a sea bag to see Kent State on fire and kind of looked at the sunshine and said, "What am I going to do with the rest of my life?" Turned around and went back to Asia. Again, a lot of things happened, a lot of water under the bridge, but one of the noteworthy accomplishments, I think, that this council has made over the years is a responsibility that I don't know that the boaters fully appreciate, we're all tasked with, and that is scrutiny of the department heads and hiring and firing in the city. In the last twenty-six years, there've been four city managers that we've had here, and two of them were essentially let go. And I'd like to say that in those two city managers' departure, each time, the city was improved. The four that were left, I mean, the four that were there, we included Bob Reed, who was elevated to sheriff. And the last is our current city manager, Mike Malice, who's done a remarkable growth and development in this function, in this task. And I like to say that council, in their function of selecting people, the major ally in doing that was Marilyn the whole time. If it wasn't for Marilyn, Mike Malice wouldn't be sitting there today. Because what it took was some in-depth understanding of what really is needed, what kind of a person is integral to the city, and he is. The staff here is. This city council kind of goes through the motions, and we take credit for what they do. These people that are here twenty-four, seven, these people that are taking the responsibility day and night, and that includes our uniformed services, our service department, our water department, and these people up here. They're the professionals that make this city run. We just kind of go along, and they give us the information and they get their way. Because I don't think there's anyone on this council that suspects any motives other than City of Bedford from these people, any deception like we've had before. It's all right up front, and hopefully, this new council collectively keeps this information out here to you people right up front, and I suspect that they will. Then in conclusion, I'd just like to wish the council the wisdom to continue doing what they've been doing, the strength to do the right thing, even when it's not politically expedient, and the camaraderie to come out of it despite the arguments at the end of it as a unit. And I'd like to say that we were, I was, blessed with the wisdom to be guided by the confidence that was placed in me from my staunch supporters and especially my campaign manager, my father. I didn't ever want to do anything that would besmirch the confidence that those people put in me, and at the end of it, that was the motivator. So those motivations were, that's introspective to where I was coming from, but I hope that these people on this council are motivated by the same thing rather than political self-interest. And I suspect they will be, and I suspect this city administration will hold them together and hold them to that challenge, as well as you people out there will. So elections have consequences, and this is probably a good consequence, and this is probably a new day for this group, and I wish them all the success in the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Now comes that portion of the meeting, the hearing of citizens. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, address, and your comment.
There is a bomb in Gilian, killing the sin six hole. There is a bomb in Gilian, making the wounded whole. And I said I'd encourage you this evening, when you're in polite, to address the brokenness of those who are addicted to opiates and abuse and other forms of addictions because you're doing a marvelous job in addressing, and there is a bomb at M eight elbow that's going to keep coming for you. And I want to say congratulations to all of the I R Es this evening for doing a marvelous work. And I want to especially applaud you, sir. I've never had a chance to meet you or know you, but to not only serve and have respect, but to leave with respect is an honor and a privilege and a blessing. And I pray that as you leave this journey that you have completed, that you will go into the next one with joy and leave also that next one with not only respect and honor, but with joy. My name's Reverend Pamela M. Pinkney Buds. I'm recently new to the community, and if I had known about the meeting, I was loving to want to be there, but I didn't know the details of it. So please keep me posted. I am interested in reciprocity between myself and you all. Money answers all things, but when you find out what a person will do with money, you find out what they'll do for you, too. I can't even tell you, thank you, Mayor Coach, council members, and those who were here on the last meeting when I spoke. I can't even tell you thank you. I don't know what you did other than pray, but I know you did something. When Paul went around doing his missionary work and his other work, he ended up in a place called Philippi. And they said, he said to them, "At the time, you wanted to do for me, but you couldn't. But I know your heart was with me, and I wanted to come to tell you thank you this evening for being my place of refuge, my place of healing and my place of restoration, my place of hope, and being a friendly place." I've been in a lot of places, and I've lost a lot of things, and you know, lost a lot of people in my life, but this is a safe place for me, and I came to tell you thank you. And the word of God does talk about feeding, visiting, and calling, and I pray that you keep up your good work, and I pray that you don't let anyone come through here and violate your religious freedom to do so. There is a boat, and don't step off with your eyes on the storm. But I want to tell you this evening is just stay on the boat and keep going to the other side. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Heather Rhodes, Two Four One Center. I just had a quick question, Mike. What did they decide, what did you decide on for submitting the grants? You said you had a plan to plan together, so I just wanted to know.
Sure, we're submitting a plan for cameras, which will, depending, we have not received the final proposal yet. So we're kind of, we're readying the grant until we know the exact amount to see if we'll be able to extend it beyond the auto mile. As far as the other, we did make a recommendation and met with the two members of the C D C. We're going to be meeting again next month, but we are going to be putting together a grant for year one in, obviously this storefront, I shouldn't say storefront, the supplemental grant has been available for a couple of years, so we're hopeful that it continues. So this year, what we're looking at is the Broadway corridor. So it would start somewhere in the area of Southwick and go all the way towards the cemetery. If we're successful in that grant, I shouldn't say we, if the B C D C is successful with that grant, that application, what we would like to do is possibly renew that and do another third main thoroughfare the following year and potentially be Northfield Road and then go from there. So that's what we're looking at. I know we are going to be meeting again in a couple of weeks. I looked down at Frank, Frank was in that meeting, and we're trying to fill out the, bring that organization back. What I mean, it's still active, but we need to fill out with membership. Because it's not going to be, what we're proposing for those of you that, that were not at the meeting is, the B C D C was created years ago with the idea that businesses would contribute funds towards that group and then they could do various projects, programs. You know, it's tough on a small community. Everybody's asking everybody to donate and contribute in various ways. So we have utilized that, the B C D C for certain things like the Alma Flick project and others. But what we are looking to do is Jennifer in Economic Development found this grant and realized that we are able, or Development Corporation is able to apply. So when we met, we said, let's apply and try to mimic a storefront or an exterior renovation project for the businesses, small businesses in a certain area. Again, it gets tricky with that census tract, you know, a county's going to look and see how many people are you going to affect. So by extending it down Broadway, there's a lot of traffic there. We believe it'll affect a decent amount of people to score high. And the idea is that it indicated to increase numbers in the B C D C. What it'll allow to happen is if a business owner wants to go ahead and apply for a grant to put up a new sign and new windows, and it's an eight thousand dollar project, they would contribute half of the funds and they could apply to the B C D C to fund the other half of the project. So the grant is up to fifty thousand dollars and I think that's a good amount of money to get that organization moving. And that grant dollars collectively, we, it's not high, but you know, it could extend two or three years. So that's kind of what we're looking at. I did speak to the chief about the comments as far as potential intersections and things like that. We're really trying to massage and see what that quote comes in at, but we're throwing a lot at him and we got about ten days to wrap the application up, but that's what we're looking at. I know there was a comment, and I mentioned it a little bit ago, about residents, like what can we do for the residents, potential sewer replacements, things like that. It wouldn't score high enough for this, but we are anticipating a potential, and I'm not the county, so I can't guarantee, but there are talks about potential grant programs to assist homeowners. And if there is something like that, we will apply. And it might be used similar to where we have to apply for a certain amount of funds and then we can help work to distribute that to our residents. We'll wait and hear from them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Saying that, can I have a motion for adjournment by Isaac, second by Saunders. Call roll please.
Isaac?
Yes.
Do you notice?
Yes.
Bozard?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Zalada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming. Good to see a large group here.